Make the other mayor and the board of Alderman for the city of Cleveland is now in session. Anybody have any business before this board, please come forward and you'll be your.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we come this hour of the evening to give thanks for the many blessings that have restored unto us. We thank you for this privilege and we thank you for this opportunity for allowing us to come together to discuss the business of the city. We pray that everything we do and say will be in your will. In Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Do you like to speak?
I would, I think.
Wait.
This may be one of the easiest things you have to do tonight because we're not asking for any approval of anything. We do have a fairly large project that we've been working on as a public arts committee. And we wanted to bring it to you so you would have a first glance of it. We thought before we moved forward with it that we, well, not before we move forward because we have moved forward to a great detail that you can see tonight. But we wanted to bring it to you to get your input, feedback, or any issues that you might have. You know that we have been working for the last few years on what I call the Breeze Way. The walkway that leads to the parking that's behind the stores downtown, Camion Way Street. And so we are really wanting to encourage people to park there. And we think it's becoming more and more critical because of our fifty nights of lights, the number of visitors that come to town. And there are just many nights that it's very difficult to get a parking space in downtown. So we want to do everything we can to encourage people to park back there. We, the Breeze Way project was much more than we anticipated when we started it. Because when we got into the ceiling and the roof, it was all rotten. So we had to redo all of that. So that did eat up a lot of our money, but we were able to do the Breeze Way to get it painted, to get it cleaned up, to get new roof, new ceiling, and new lights. So now you can see that that's a well-lit area and that people should be willing to use it and not be afraid at night if they're parking in that back parking area. Now, one of the things that we talked about that we think will maybe help us to even dress up that area a little more would be a large mural. And so we've been working on what that would look like. We work with Rossens, we work with Tower Lones. And we are proposing a mural that will wrap around. It will start on Tower Lones and it would wrap around and be on the back of Rossens and be on the other side. And there would be things that would point people to that entrance. We are hoping that we can eventually do more with the cleanup of that parking lot. We've talked to the merchants and by the way, the merchants have been very receptive and very supportive as we've talked to them about things like cleaning up and the the garbage containers that are there sometimes are not as what they need to be, but people have been taking action. So it looks a lot better going down Camion Way now than it did. But we feel like we still have some things to do to get where we want to be. The parking lot needs some cleaning up, needs just some around the crate myrtles. And so we'll work with Public Works to get that done, the Beautification Commission, and the Public Arts Committee will work on that. So we bring that to you tonight just for you to see. And I think it's, you have images of what we're talking about in your documents. Corkcut has been our designer for this. He's part of the Public Arts Committee. And before me confusing everyone with your last name, would you please pronounce it for everybody?
I'll check, easiest way is I'll check.
Okay, all right. So he, he has worked with us on this design. He met with many people in Cleveland, talking to them about the history of Cleveland. And we think that we have a good representative picture and, and a, a design that will speak to Cleveland. And so, but we wanted you to start to look at what we're doing. This is not in final form, so please, if you have something that you think, oh, I don't think you need to have this, or I think you need to have this, or we would be very open to hearing any of your suggestions and ideas. But as I said, we wanted to bring it to you so that we can continue to work on cleaning up that parking lot, encouraging people to use it. I know that you, there's been restriping done on that, but and some new lights and light bulbs have been changed, but we may need to continue to look at lighting in those two back parking lots. So we think it's a critical need and we want to work on it. And we are excited with the plans that we have made thus far for this. It would be a really big mural. It will start on Tower Lones and wrap around to the back of Rossens. And there will be a way that, and we, we know that we still need to talk about making sure that we've got the approval of anybody that needs to approve it. And we're not sure we have all of that in place yet, but we will continue to work on that. So all we're doing tonight is bringing it to you for your review, for you to see what we're working on. And then Cork, do you want to add anything to that?
I don't have any. I mean, we just need everybody's feedback if there's any. Because I'm pretty new here, so we want to hear like from the folks here who spend their whole lives.
Did you happen to bring, I did not receive any designs, documents, or anything to upload for the Alderman. So we assumed that you were going to bring them.
No, because.
Anything.
No.
I didn't receive anything from Melissa.
So we didn't get it.
Well, I'm so sorry because I did have copies that I could have brought, but we were told not to, that it would be in your documents.
Unless it was dropped late, later today, the last, yeah, the last time.
We can get them out to everybody.
I can definitely send, I can definitely send them out to everyone.
Well, that, that would be great. That seems like it's just one of those things that misunderstanding or something.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
Let me take, let me just take this moment off, first of all, to thank you for the enhancement. Anytime we can enhance things, just step up.
Well, we have, we have such a great group of people in Cleveland that volunteer and work hard and give up their time and give up their energy. And what I think truly makes our whole town special is that we have such a great group of volunteers. And so it's the Public Arts Committee, it's the Beautification Committee. You know that Betsy Abraham's now chairs that committee and people that just give up their time and energy. So it's not just a few people, it's a big group, but thank you. And thank all of you because you're part of that group that works so hard to keep everything going and in place, so.
Did we mention anything in the earlier stages about security cameras back there?
We have not talked about that, but that's not a bad, a bad idea. Probably do need to make in terms of security cameras back there.
With the possibility of those chargers, we should probably put in it, Mayor, that in allowing those chargers to come, that whoever's responsible for that should put in some, help us with some security cameras, those.
Like energy you're talking about?
Energy, yes, energy. Maybe they would do it because they're the ones that are putting up the charging stations. And, and they might be able to help us with that. Don't know. But I think it's really helped the beautification feel good back there.
Okay, I think it will, and I think it will bring extra attention to the, the back area and will be something. And we've even talked to some of the merchants and we are all, this is a very, very preliminary idea about having something in that back area and having maybe food trucks and music and letting people kind of get used to it and see, because a lot of people still don't know where those parking lots are. So, but we feel like we really do need to encourage them to, to use them. So with that, that's the easiest thing that you might have tonight. Now, we are bringing one for your approval tonight and Mr. Trotter is going to talk about that for us, so that's later in the agenda.
Questions, gentlemen?
And I'm sorry about the.
No, I will make sure that it gets through to the board.
Okay.
Texting them right now, they should have been uploaded and they're doing it. I can pull the meetings up.
That's right. We'll get it, we'll get it out.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mayor, one thing, I know we're looking at resurfacing those lots eventually, but we do have some bad deep potholes. Maybe they got around to them this week while I was gone, but we need to look at that to, to help. I think it would incent, you know, it would really help bring people back there basically, don't have that issue. Thank you.
Okay, my dismissed.
I've never got to say it to school.
Get off the box.
Thank you. Before we go on, I'd like to welcome Dr. Ennis. Glad to have you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Terry Bright, I think you're behind me.
This is right.
I hear it downstairs.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm simply here on behalf of Delta State. I don't want to get into a situation of positionality in terms of a legal stance, jurisdictional bounds and things of that nature. My position here is an advocate for the students. More or less, anything and everything that I do consists of student-led initiatives. Meaning that these initiatives are things that the actual students come up with. My student organization, which is the State Men's Pioneer spearheads many of these events. Most of these events are compiled once these students do polls and see what other students are interested in. And then we simply, from the Office of Student Engagement and also the Office of Student Affairs, try to make these, which is kind of fruition. So one of those were Fall Fest since typically we always do have a Spring Fest. The students said that the kids in the fall typically have more fun. I mean, the kids in the spring typically have more fun because they have a fest and those that are coming in in the next semester do not. So to try to make it more equitable, we introduced Fall Fest a year ago. Fall Fest consists of a bonfire and we're currently trying to expand it. It did consist of a few vendors, few sponsors and things of that nature. And as I said, we're trying to expand it and make it bigger. So this year, we elected rather than having it on the golf course to have it at Statesman's Park, which is where most of our tailgating events occur. It will also be in conjunction with our final football game of the season, which is Senior Day for the students. So with that being said, and it being kind of like a grand finale for those senior students in class of Fall 2026, we wanted to incorporate not just the bonfire and the regular tailgating activities. We wanted to also incorporate music and things that people typically do during tailgating. It was an expressed interest last year that there was an issue with some of the music. In order to try to mitigate some of that, the Office of Student Affairs has brought forth a new policy which limits music and things of that nature to one hundred decibels. So with that being said, it's actually kind of in compliance with what Cleveland has in place. So we just want to collaboratively work to ensure that our students have the best experience here in Cleveland, Mississippi that they can possibly have. And with that being said, it takes a collaborative effort from us all, not just specifically Delta State community, but Cleveland as a whole, because we are all inclusive within the same community. So I just.
What's that date?
That's November fifteenth.
November fifteenth.
Is it a football game?
Yes, it's our final football game. The ballgame begins at two o'clock PM. So it'll just typically be like tailgating like we've done, you know, on previous occasions, leading up to the Fall Fest festivities.
Are you still planning to do the fireworks?
We are.
Okay, so, because I think that's the most important thing that, that the board has to approve is the fireworks.
And everything that we have is in compliance with standards. I did briefly speak with Mr. Jackson by text message. He has all the documentation that he needed from the vendor, which is Janam Displays. So we're in the process of trying to get those things finalized, but he has the documentation that's needed.
What, what, what is the timeframe on this?
Six to midnight.
Six to eleven fifty-nine, because technically by our policies, all of our events have to end at eleven fifty-nine. So it'll be after-game activities.
Mayor, that was the area of discussion that I had mentioned we probably needed to talk about. And it was based on last year when we did this event, we were told it would be nine to ten o'clock for a bonfire. So we get all the trucks together, get the firemen out there. At ten o'clock, they're still going. At eleven o'clock, they're still going. And of course, we can't take the city fire truck and get it staged there for three to four to five hours for a bonfire. And then, of course, you got the doors, no ordinance for ten o'clock to where loud music, you know. And so there's got to be some kind of a, you know, hey, there's people that live there on Hillcrest Circle, the fireman can't be out there. You know, I talked to them, can you do it? They're willing to do it. And they're saying, hey, we're going to be going at ten o'clock, they'll put the fire out at ten o'clock. I know there's a boundary as far as, but when something gets lit, if Delta State is the responsibility of the Cleveland Fire Department, once it was lit. So, you know, I, I don't know what it looks like, but I think we do cooperate as far as what we can provide. But it needs to be, you know, it needs to be reasonable. We can't get there at eleven, twelve o'clock at night with a fire truck.
They have the bonfire from eight to midnight on their document.
Right, that's probably.
That's four hours.
Now, let me ask you this question. Is it feasible to coincide with that at ten or is that a problem with that?
It's like one of the primary aspects of the actual event. Of course, we're willing to try to negotiate, you know, in terms of things and try to come to a resolution. But it's one of the primary things in the event, which is why a lot of students come. So in trying to garner, like I said, my position as a person who's trying to increase engagement and advocacy, my main job and focus is to try to get the students there. So when we poll them and ask them what are things that will get them to come out, this is one of the things that we receive. Everything that we put in place, my office, it's garnered by the students. It's not, not an idea that I actually came up with, is an idea that they presented. So of course, like I said, we're willing to try to negotiate by all means. I don't want to take away the primary focuses of the event, because then I know I won't garner their support nor will I garner their present.
Well, let me just say this, and I stand bold when I say this, it's, there's a need right now to make sure that we have a lot of unity and to govern this, to make sure that these things are spirited for the students. But at the same time, I think the bearing of all of the great with me, just a personal thing, we want to make sure you have everybody there that you need, need in, in the time element and if we can work with that time though.
Okay, well. Bonfire, how long did you prefer a bonfire?
Well, last year it was, you know, ten o'clock, which went.
Should have been one hour or two hours, um, so like eight to ten?
Yeah, I assume presented it as it was supposed to end at that time because it was initially supposed to end at eleven fifty-nine, so I'm trying to see how that we derive it ten o'clock.
That's what we were told by whoever did it last year. Well, of course, the guys are there and then it gets to be eleven o'clock and they're like, well, then they call the chief, the chief shows up. It goes, it's eleven thirty. And then when we get there, we look for whoever's in charge. And most everyone there is inebriated and the people that come up there.
No, I, I actually was the person in charge and contact was made with me.
So last year we received numerous calls about loud music. I showed up personally along with nine officers. First thing that I smelled was marijuana, okay, underage drinking, we saw that. And you've, you said that I couldn't do anything because that was state property.
No, let's, if we're going to use specific and actual terms, can we have the entire context? I don't argue. I have discussions.
This is what we were told last year. And so we, we want to participate. When we let my kids graduate, we're, we're green and white. But, but it's got to be both sides.
I agree. As long as we can sit down and have a conversation and a formal discussion where we can communicate, I have no problem with that. And I understand the city's perspective in terms of the timeframes and things of that nature. I call it like this, I'm here for the purpose of garnering support. If we can accommodate each other, I have no issue or problem with that.
Okay, so the tone of this letter that she wrote to, to the mayor and I guess to the Board of Alderman is going contrary to that. You're not seeking approval. You're saying we're going to do what we want.
Well, it's not that I'm telling you that.
That's what this letter reads.
That's interpretation. Um, this letter reads codes. I did not write them. The state of Mississippi did.
The context of it is that you're not going to cooperate.
That's not what's being said. That's your interpretation. You're entitled to that. However, I'm just specifically stating what the law states.
So what are our options?
Well, if you're writing a big check for these festivities, I would suggest we all cooperate with each other. We have volunteer firemen such as Alderman here is retired from volunteer fireman. He did it for fifteen years. Don't get paid. They're out, they're leaving their families and they're out there. So that's why they want to go home at ten o'clock. You've got, you've got a lot of people.
Well, we have to provide fire protection to the rest of the city and we can't have everyone tied up. I mean, we have to know a time and not only that's ten o'clock, Danny.
So if we can adjust this time, it seems like the bonfire is the issue here as relates to timing. The adjustment of that time probably would be something that I'm sure that our fire chief would be amenable to. So we need to definitely look at that. Because if they're trying to go home and still trying to participate and garner that support that you're saying that we're trying to do. It looks like to me that that is one of the issues, the time as relates to the bonfire. So I'm sure if that can be amended, that we, you will get the participation or that support that you get, that you're going, that you're looking for. So if you're starting at eight, if it's two hours by ten.
Starting at six.
I know, know.
Oh, just the bonfire itself.
That's the issue because the bonfire is from eight to eleven fifty, which is almost, what, what we're saying, ten minutes or twelve. And that's twelve, that's about four hours. So if that's, if that can be amended, I'm sure that you can get that protection that you're looking for as relates with the chief.
Should we let Chief them get together, work this out?
Yeah, I can call our fire chief, you know. We, he, I called him before we came and I said, what are, what are you in agreement with? I believe ten o'clock, asking our guys to do that is, you know, above and beyond board. He was thinking ten o'clock. Matter of fact, his words to me was at ten o'clock, we're going to put the fire out.
Who was it?
Wes Willard, he is our fire chief. That was the words from Wes.
Well, actually that is his authority.
That was, that was what came from Wes.
So this is my question that I proposed, would it be possible for us to actually have a sit down with Mr. Williford and try to negotiate terms to meet somewhere in the middle in terms of the time? Because I, I think that would be an equitable solution.
You could talk to him, I'm sure.
Okay, but I would like you to be present.
Greg, if you should be present with that.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, one thing that she addressed was the, the support garnished with the city, Delta State University. Just to throw a few numbers out there, we increased over probably fifty or sixty percent of our fire costs last year at Delta State University. We receive a thousand dollars a month from Delta State, which is minuscule in comparison with Valley, Ole Miss, all these other places where they receive a fire protection. And Delta State's receiving a Class Three Fire Department, one of the best rated in the state. And then adding to that, the city of Cleveland just spent two point one million dollars on a ladder truck simply because of the elevated sleeping areas that are at Delta State University. And the reason we had to buy the truck and was looked into as far as rating here, was because of Delta State University. So I would, I would caution to say that that pendulum has kind of swung toward Cleveland as being a very large participator recently in the financial. You're a big supporter of Delta State.
I never said no one was, and I don't want to take away from that, but I don't know specifics and statistics, but I'm sure the president does in terms of the revenue that Delta State University brings to the city of Cleveland. So if we want to throw out numbers, but I'm not here for that. I am here for the purpose of Delta State students to advocate for what they're requesting.
I agree. We're not going to start saying who does.
Yeah, I don't want to.
I didn't make that.
I know, I know you don't, but Greg, let's set a time that you can make, Ms. Terry Bright. And Wes, if you, we can get him available and let's sit down here. We have another board meeting before this ever happens, or two more before this ever. And that we should be able to get this worked out.
Definitely, because like I said, I am willing to.
This is the board's decision, this is not my decision. That's what y'all would like to do.
So with that being said, and since we're going to schedule a meeting subsequent to this one, do we proceed as usual with the planning process until we're able to sit down and things of that nature? Because it's a very short timeframe in this window.
I'm sure if you can get with Muscle Jackson and Muscle Williford as soon as possible, that they're willing to meet.
Okay. Being asked for approval for them to do all this?
The, the board has to approve the fireworks.
The fireworks and the time for those.
Be in the minutes.
A week after others do the rest of the stuff.
But the fireworks, maybe you want to have all that. He has all that.
She has all the licenses and all of that.
We normally do.
The reason for the decision deals with somebody coming along and putting an ordinance on state property that certain signs had to be located there and it went to court and said, no.
We have approved them.
You're a creation of the state, you don't get to regulate the state. So I get that, but there's also this relationship and, and I think to take the approach.
What time is the fireworks show planned for?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock fireworks.
It's like a.
It's only ten minutes.
Carry it forward, don't worry, ten minutes.
Spend a lot in ten minutes on fireworks.
Yeah.
Right. I think the major issue is the bonfire.
The bonfire? Yes, that's why, because I'm looking at the time.
How do we do it all at one time, Danny, or do we take this in pieces? What are you asking?
What about? Problems that they ran into.
Kind of proved the fireworks and as far as the time, it looks like they're going to maybe.
About that.
We're going to be on you. This is Delta State Security.
But he was last year.
Well.
Like what?
We do have our own police department. We also have the shares out there as well.
We'll be on city property. We won't be on Delta State's property. Police and their property.
We do ask respect for our citizens to keep the music down, so we don't get bombarded with calls of loud music.
Well, I think the location is key as well. That's why we, rather than having it on the golf course close to that residential area, that's one of the reasons we elected to move it to Statesman's Park. Because back there, it is much more unincorporated land. So in the residential area is not within close proximity of it.
We've got a new subdivision next door now, though. I'm sorry. We've got a new subdivision next door now.
I'm aware, but it's dependent upon where you're stationed in Statesman's Park. And like I said, we have implemented a policy in terms of the sound on campus ourselves. So students don't want to be subject to those penalties they may incur from those policies.
So are you having, like bands, DJs?
Music bands from both, actually. It's the student showcase of our DMI students, our music program students, where they do have bands and they also have individual performances. So it's just basically showcasing our students for the entire rest of the student demographics. And also we'll have a DJ as another component of it.
Okay, but not like a big band, like a, not hiring.
I I don't wanna take away from them to say not like a big band. It'll be showcasing our students, but.
But it will be it will be an understanding that um that we have residents around and that we don't want to disturb them.
Definitely.
We want to respect them and their property.
Definitely, okay.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, got their motion or we're just y'all awake and let them meet with.
We just need to work.
I can, I agree.
I um I think most of them will wait until after they meet and then they come back and give us um some updates before we make a decision.
Special call meeting to do that.
Yeah.
This this is no.
Have anything lined up there for you all. I think certainly things so will.
Information so we can schedule to meet.
Let's see that. The pictures are added.
That's all. All right. Danny, public hearings.
Okay, these uh list notices between one nineteen and public hearings. Three oh two Legion Road, Michael L. Scruggs and Maya Griffin. Seven oh one Rosemary Road, Frank L. Quinn Jr., four oh seven Industrial Parkway. Alston Villa Developers LLC, six oh five North Davis Avenue, Valley View Aggra LLC. One fifty five North Street, Western Phil Brothers LLC. Five fourteen Murphy Street, Alexander, Georgia. Two oh four North Victoria, Walker and Walker, Inc. Three fifteen and three seventeen South Volver Avenue, Greenbacks LLC, one oh nine Dean Street. Gloria J. Partridge, five oh five North Bio Avenue, Margaret L. Williams, Eric Robbie Melton. Five twenty North Bio Avenue, um Batul McCarter. Uh, six sixty North Volver Avenue, Joe Earl Watford, six thirty six Jane Street. Marra Q. Club, K L U C K. Uh, and finally, fifteen forty one Garrison Avenue, Eddie L. and Rosie here. Henry, is there anybody here to address these or request time? There being no uh one here and then Ford having reviewed the packet, it would be in order to move for declaration under twenty one nineteen eleven.
Second by Abraham, second by permission. All those in favor? Close. Josh?
Yes, you got my report and I'll I'll hit a few of the high points. Uh, first up Bishop Road, we have a change order. We completed all the piping work. We have a change order to add twelve new inlet grades. That's replacing every inlet between uh Maple and Terrace on Bishop Road. New grades. They're all consistent. There's a lot of them that are damaged. And that also includes replacing additional concrete pavement. In order to maximize our budget. Remember, we went into this project awarded several uh several hundred thousand dollars under budget. So we're trying to maximize use of this grant uh and that that this will do it to wrap it up.
What are they working on now, that list?
Concrete pavement.
Like today. They were doing all that.
We're adding more to it. We've got it. So we awarded the project six hundred thousand under budget. And so with the grant, we had a severely low bid, so uh we've had to add some of it with additional piping here and there. And so this will be the. The final final amount to to fully maximize our our project out there.
So I have a motion. I second my Robert, second by Danny, all in favor.
All right, next up City Hall, we have another change order for some wood base molding with the boardroom and a couple offices in the back. So all the back offices are consistent. And that brings our time. I know we we mentioned this earlier before the meetings uh. November twelve would be contract time on this project. Uh, they are on schedule uh everything to date. It it it's coming along. It's just taking time to get through it all, so.
If anybody wants to come out and look at the boardroom, it's looking really nice.
Stay the yeah, the the board, the wood board looks really nice.
Well, they they put the um stealer on or the fire thing.
They did.
The wood, it looks really good.
So you say the change order is to um change out the finishing, the wood?
Using, we have rubber base for the whole building. Uh, we're adding wood base molding for the boardroom.
We need a motion for that.
Yeah.
Motion by Danny, second. Second, all those in favor?
Hello, brief update. Uh, we're wrapping up the cemetery now. Uh, they're gonna start seeding. It'll be the last thing to finish. And our streets, they're gonna be back. Um, told the asphalt crew will be back next week to finalize the few little items around town. I think concrete, they're continuing on First Street, then back to Maple Street and then back to South Street, trying to wrap it up. We've probably got another five or six weeks of concrete work. Awesome.
Is that near like right at the west end of Maple where it hits uh Fifth? Is that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's horrible. Okay.
That's all I have. Y'all anything else to mention?
Josh, what what's the status of the cemetery?
They're finishing it now. They wrapped it up uh last week and we had a few punch list items due. They had to come replace a few concrete panels. And there's a little cleanup that I was told that they're gonna have done by the end of the weekend and they're seeding it and that'll be it. The final step, once they finish, we'll we'll put together a subdivision plan. Then I have to get filed. We'll have to stake off all the uh the graves. Uh, and then it'll be ready to start selling lots.
Josh, if they do that pass word, make sure that they look at that little spot right there. Lucy, Natalia Hudson.
What street?
Huh? Right there by East Side High School. It's a a rough spot right there in the street. It's right near the corner of Ruby and uh. Lucy Seabear, I said Natalia. And uh also B Street is real bad. Let's have a seven hundred.
Anything we need to talk about with the thought on the crosswalk?
Now, so uh. For Fifth.
To bring it up.
We can. Um, you wanna make the request? I can get into it or?
Sure, I have a request for um. I got a call from Case Cooper. They are taking over the garden. Area that's beside Andy's where, I don't know who maintained that garden, whatever, between Andy's.
Part of community.
The south of Andy's, Greg.
The south of Andy's. And we're interested to see if we could get a crosswalk, just like painted crosswalk with the entrance and stuff. And blinky lights, I guess, like what we have already at Delta State. Closer to that area, south of Andy's somewhere.
That one side.
So they can walk the students down and cross over to the um garden. And I'm sure we have students that live all over there too, so it might be helpful to have a crosswalk down there. So. We have a request to do that.
You gotta do anything like you do with a regular slap sign for that?
So this will be a mid-block crosswalk, just like every every all the other ones on Fifth. They're all mid-block to Delta State, which you want to uh minimize. You you know, obviously you try to avoid when you can. Uh, long term, we have plans. We did apply it to the report. We did apply for DOT funding. For Court Street, we included some uh raised pedestrian crossings across Fifth in that area, one even.
In that area too, on the six.
And we can we can adjust them however would make sense. I know Delta State has a lot. We wanted to get with them and see what. Where the best, you know, where the highest traffic crossings are and try to place them.
Right.
So you do try to avoid mid-block, but when you do say that, that that'd be almost like a speed hunt. That's kinda, yeah, exactly what it is. Yeah. And so there uh.
And that stops where we came to that.
And there wouldn't be a stop. Yeah, so uh I don't know if it takes, I don't know if it would be a board action to add a crosswalk. And I I don't know. The the cost is pretty minimal. The city can paint them themselves. You do need to have the proper signage put up. I don't know if all the other ones on Fifth have the proper signage.
I'm not sure they have all the proper signage and they all probably need to be repainted anyhow. I have no, I like problem with this, especially if we're gonna have young children moving.
I assume the timing, they won't they're actively, or is this like spring? I don't know when they use this guard.
I don't know. And do you not? I don't know when they're gonna start.
I'll tell you what. How about, let me look into what we have out there now and I'll get with poll works and we'll come back with a. Kind of a recommendation of what we could do short term versus ultimately long term. We make them up, so.
Did you something, did Dr. James say we could have a grant to do the raised crosswalk?
We we included addressing uh Fifth Avenue crosswalks in the MDOT uh TA grant that we just submitted. Uh, I think last week.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Okay, so. And that included, in addition to that, it included.
Court Street.
Court Street, Striving and Light along Court Street.
Um, bike lane.
Trying to get a bike lane in there, re uh. We could get into, we wanna get rid of the turning lane on Court is you wanna straighten that out and have a two lanes and a bike lane. And then have the whole thing lighted all the way from Fifth.
Basically making like Fifth Avenue and Court Street, well, from campus to downtown, a little more pedestrian friendly.
That's correct.
I probably submitted last week.
We don't need a motion now for anything. We're just gonna look into a job, see how many we got, what are we looking at?
Yes.
We're gonna get with public court phone, what needs painting and signage.
Yes, I'm doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Danny, thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, the next thing you have is approval of your consent agenda. If there are no questions, it needs a motion second.
Sorry, no.
Motion by Bishop, second by Abraham, all those in favor?
Have a memo for you in the file uh if there are any questions. Um, the next thing on the agenda from the attorney is. Approval of the resolution of hiring the bond counsel professional is for your fiscal year twenty twenty six bond.
So move.
Second.
First by Abraham, second by Brian Bishop. All in favor? Closed.
Our next there is approval of uh retaining our same bond counsel. Uh, Brad has worked with the city for a bunch of years. He's at Watkins and Eager. And he has a letter of engagement. You're approved.
Motion by Bishop, second by Abraham, all in favor? Y'all gotta speak up.
I try.
And next, approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty six bond resolution intent. That's the big one.
I moved.
Motion by Heather.
Thank you. Trying to get you in there.
I was reading.
All right, the next thing, six, and then I know y'all are tired of me. Uh, approval of a thirty day extension on the vector disease. Disease control grant. Now, this is your mosquito spraying and we talked about it at length with them. We're putting together something that addresses what your concerns are and it's more about the science, which means we asked Josh. Uh, but basically, the concern was that we have the mosquito. Planes fly over them because and the mosquitoes are worse than everybody is happy with. Well, they test. And they determine what they're gonna do based upon a certain threshold of the mosquitoes that they're getting. So. The suggestion is is that we rework the contract, lower that threshold so that those those activities would occur sooner. But then we have to deal with cost and things like that. And so we've requested that y'all just extend that contract for thirty days. So we keep paying them. Do we get a new and done?
And actually, they have continued their services. They have not stopped because they know. And this is not unusual, that you know, to work out the uh terms of the agreement. They don't ever stop providing their services. Because they know that it's already been approved. But just to give the board a level of comfort. We decided it would be best to do this thirty day.
Well, it's in our budget approved, but we haven't approved the contract. That's the.
No, sir. That's what I'm saying.
I have the contract. We don't have a contract.
You know that the the appropriation has been approved. That's correct.
Have we contacted them to?
Yes, sir. I said, yes, sir.
I don't think we need it. Do we need a?
Yes, sir. Keep paying them. We've extended the contract.
I have a question, please, for the attorney. Are you through, sir?
Yes.
All right, here's my question. Our comment. Uh, we have an ordinance that addresses subcontractors on utilities. Uh, two or three months ago, Energy came in here and uh cut trees all over town. And the only one I've seen that I got a call from so far is between Hillcrest and Frederick. Uh, starting right there at that first block uh to the west. They left all of the tree trimmings in the easement. They did not, number one, they did not remove them. Number two. Instead of bringing in ladders and trucks, they use people's storage rooms and houses in the back of those easements to stand on. And cut limbs. I've gotten a complaint uh from a family on Frederick. That uh, I'm sorry, on Hillcrest, that they total totally, the roof caved in. And uh they want to know if they need to bring civil action against Energy Energy or if they need to get a quote, bring it to us and we present it to Energy. How how do we?
Who was the?
Uh, you know, subcontractor, I mean, let's, I have their phone number, maybe something. I have their phone, I have their phone numbers and and I forget their names. I apologize. Uh.
Could I suggest?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I and for you and for anybody that encounters that on any of our properties in Cleveland, if you'll contact community development. They're gonna deal with it. Uh, if if they if they had.
On destruction of property, on the destruction of property.
Yeah, well, no, these subcontractors run wild cuz they'll hire somebody who wants to supervise them, you know, and and I get that. If they, if you run into that situation, the debris and things piled up, that would be, that would be something for community development. The other thing I would say is. Uh, as far as them tearing up somebody's property, um, that's on energy.
That goes to the.
That's the simple is what I'm saying.
And and.
We should be out of that.
We all.
But we do have an ordinance that we approve or, you know, control these uh utility subcontractors that come in here. And all I'm saying is we need to pay a little bit more attention to energy in these tree trimmers because if it happened over there, it happened all over town there, I'm sure. Thank you. Appreciate it. I know how to handle it. We need to notify engine that we got a problem.
Felix?
We can. Average act of less tomorrow.
I think you need to go ahead and let them know that they're getting ready to have a problem. Thank you.
Yeah, the falling through the roof part sounds a little.
Yeah, that's not good. Thank you. You're done? Really? Their name.
I have uh two appeal. The first appeal I have is Mr. Gary Barnett. He's uh here to appeal the plant commission to deny his request to rezone a parcel of land from B two Central Business District. To B three Highway Commercial. Uploader Dominics and Planting Commission Minus in y'all file. Y'all should have everything. And Mr. Barnett's here to argue his appeal.
Oh, and this is John Daniel, ran an attorney.
Board members, John Daniels. Uh, I'm here with Mr. Barnett who owns EZ Ride Auto Sales. I got Gary to put together what I hope is help. Now, the property, correct me now, okay, is directly across from Cannon, which used to be Cosman. Okay, uh, the front port that parallels sixty one of the lots, two lots. It is zone B three, but the back part, which is to the west. Here, pretty much, you know, all one is zone B two. Gary wants to improve that property and substantially, and it will cost him well within the six figures. But let me just kind of go through this pretty quick with you all. Uh, and it's, I don't know, you all can probably read these plans a whole lot better than I can. This one, in my opinion, makes, doesn't make a lot of sense, but this would be the interior of the uh property. Or the the office and then the shop behind it. Am I right about that? Yes. And if you all have been by that building recently, I go by it all the time coming up here. That place looks, I don't wanna say it looks like hell, but it just looks bad. And it is in need of substantial improvement and it will, in my judgment. Really improve the looks of that part of the city. Nonetheless. really improve the looks of that part of the city. Nonetheless, uh gonna put up a new building. I, I think zoning requires brick veneer, is that correct, Gary?
Or stucco.
Or stucco, yes. We've got various elevations and various views uh of, of the property. This, again, we've got several options, but uh, you know, there would be to be paved asphalt, um, uh crushed concrete, whatever, whatever is required. This is sixty one, this would be the front part of the property. That would be the office, this would be a shop, is that right? The property would be uh bound by a fence. At the moment, Gary has people coming across, driving across here. Uh, so if what all together look fifty times better, um, you know, i- if rezoned and, and if reworked, let me, I want to get, uh, here. Is this what kind of sort of?
This is what it provides. This is where all the cars on display would be. This would be, the front part would be the office open to the public. Then we have a privacy fence separating the office and the shop from all this back here, so.
What's B two and B three? Can you just?
Yes, sir. B three along, is it sixty one right?
That's sixty one.
Right. In other words, if you were standing, if I was standing looking east.
Cross from Cannon.
Yes, sir. O, O Cosman, uh, that, that where I would be standing would be B three. If I walk behind, you know, this area, which is kind of a vacant lot, that's B two. So that's not, to say. But this is a better view, I think. Is this a better view?
So the office would, would stray from the fence, so customers would have access to the office and everything. The shop, like I said, it's not open to the public. That would be to the back, which would be concealed with fence and everything. Uh, all this would be asphalted uh up front. I redo the parking lot up front and everything and uh even asphalt part of this back here. Uh, which this would be, you know, no one would ever see this except employees back here in the back.
And this would be screened off, this, what kind of fence are you intending or thinking about?
In fact, I've already even paid for it, so nice wood privacy fence.
Uh, what's the height of the key? Third, height.
Oh, uh, eight foot, six foot. Hmm, I checked on eight foot, but I, y'all don't have anything in order things about it, but the wind load and everything, Billy suggested six foot, I believe, from that and everything.
So, you know, Blake is in, oh, it's a chicken in the egg. We got to have the rezoning before we can start putting together the plans, the financing, whatever is required. Uh, but I, I can tell you, that, that stop that's there now, Gary, that was an old service site?
It was. Built, I think, uh, maybe the late forties, I believe. It was a donut shop that was next door. I think it was built in nineteen fifty or fifty five.
Are you, you're asking to rezone the back path?
Yes, ma'am.
Because you're not allowed to fence it in. Well, that, or what, or what's, what's the, what are you trying to do that's causing it to have to be rezoned on the back? Everything's.
Why I asked me rezoning because here, here the lot was draining, he put crushed concrete out there, which he received a citation because it didn't meet the land authorities. He wanted to park cars out there. He can't park and store cars on a B two lot. And sell cars. You don't have to do it on B three. So he has to rezone it, get it going. He cannot put a fence on a vacant lot. So he went and had the lots joined, but it doesn't change the fact that the zoning, because he joined the lot, the zoning is still staying, the zoning was there before he combined the lots. So his argument now is that he needs the lot rezoned because his future plans is to build, build it for his used car.
But that future building actually doesn't have anything to do with the zoning. Is the fence, the concrete and the cars in the back?
Yes, ma'am, I think it would because the office and the shop would be.
Encroaches on it.
Yes, sir. And, and, yes, ma'am, and would be contiguous together, so you could walk from the office to the shop, go back there, park.
Right, I, I get all that.
I hear you saying.
The main issue though, I don't think.
I'm sorry, did I hear you say that, that he was fined for putting crushed concrete back there?
He, he was issued a citation because he was, he uh placed crushed concrete out on the uh, on, on the lot back there.
But I've contacted the asphalt paving company, I think y'all even using for the city, but uh even he's, he's seen the pad and everything, and he liked it, but he said still gonna have to put more sub base on it, you know, concrete or fifty seven limestone or whatever, still gonna have to have that even before he comes in and pays anything. Which can't pay even until after you build a shop, you know, that would be back.
You're talking about the back area, Gary.
Where the whole.
Front will be paid, the.
Oh, definitely, for sure. No doubt about that.
So, our question is re, is spot zoning, is that, is that, was that a hang up on it, Billy?
No, sir, if the spot zone wasn't a hang up, because the joint and the hang up was that he had, he had premature actual plans and the commission, the planning commission didn't see any mistake in the zoning map, nor they see any change in the neighborhood to grant the rezon. So it was not on him not providing plans or his actual plan. At the time, you kind of plan commission, he didn't have any of the fact that he have now.
You don't have.
Wasn't a change in the neighborhood or anything like this. So everything was premature based on two years down the road and planning commission saw that it was not enough evidence to grant a rezoning.
To get these, but you know, it's difficult to, to visualize something if you don't have.
I know what I'm trying to do, but. Let me, let me explain, because I can tell you what I'm gonna tell them legally, they gotta find, okay? There's one of three ways to change this zone. Is there a mistake anywhere when, when the zoning map was done, a clerical error? None. Uh, the other way, is there a substantial change in the neighborhood that you can prove by clear and convincing evidence? No. I, what about public need? Do we have a public, has there been anything that would establish a public need for you guys? Because that's, that's the three categories and you gotta show them by clear and convincing evidence that they have a lot. So that would be, that would be my concern. I, I, but y'all haven't even met and discussed these plans yet.
No, when we had planning commission, he gave us some uh, I think I put it in Dropbox, a little sketch drawing he came to.
That's what I saw.
So that's my question, does he need to go back to the planning commission with plans now?
It would kind of have to, and we would love to, and, and we would love to have a record on those three factors because that's what, you know, we had one. Rarely get appealed on this sort of stuff, John, and we had one appealed uh a couple of years ago and it took like that long to get ruled on.
Oh, yeah.
And the judge found in our granting, uh, what we were doing there was a variance um that we did not have enough of a record. And I mean, we had a record that thick, so I, I would rather a record come up on those factors. And it sounds like the appeal is based on not having, what y'all hadn't reviewed yet. Y'all hadn't said no to the idea, you've said.
As preliminary facts and fine, of course, those rules you mentioned, the change in the neighborhood, that was part of it, the ruling as well.
Does aesthetic value fall in, is there, there's a building there now that you can tear down?
Well, and a, a part of that is aesthetic value is important and it would be, it'd be a great service to clean up that old building. One of the things that I noticed in the record was they were telling Gary, now, this building you want to build is, is perfect for B two. It's a pretty liberal thing. You can put the building on this lot, you just can't fence it and put these cars you want to keep there would be the main issue.
Let you sell cars on B two.
Yeah, um, see, so.
Cars you're gonna sell or is this lot with this fence stand for repos?
No, it's for everything. I mean, it's.
For the business, yes.
Yeah, when, when we, we have to, when I purchase cars, they go to the shop and run through the shop, get checked out and everything before they go to the front line. And so, you know, if we get one in, say it's got a water pump or something, needs to be replaced, I don't want it sitting out because people bother us all day long about like, are those cars for sale? Are those cars, no, nothing behind the offices for sale, only the ones up front. That's the purpose of the fence around it and everything.
Well, that's one of my, that I've heard, have no vote in here, yes, sir. But that, part of the problem was they were afraid it was gonna come a repo lot of wrecked cars sitting right there on the highway, behind a fence. That's what they do not want.
Oh, well, I understand every dealer in this town is that way, uh.
Yeah.
Mr. Barrett, that certainly would not be good to business to have a bunch of junk cars in the back. At least I would think, that would be my idea.
But another reason. So another reason for the fence also, I don't care if it's wood or not, honestly, it can be changed like whatever, it does not matter to me, but I like the privacy fence just to keep everybody from being nosey back there and, and asking a hundred thousand questions, you know, is are those cars for sale or whatever? Plus, I just, I need a fence to keep people from stealing stuff from back there. I mean, you like your house or business, you know, secure, I won't, I won't mind secure also.
Billy, let me ask you, there's this, back to Brian's original question. So he needs to go back to the planning commission? To present what he says.
You know, the planning commission decision, he came here to overturn the planning commission's decision or either the mayor and board.
But.
Affirm the planning commission.
But the planning commission has not seen this, this is.
But still, the facts and finally, they're gonna find what attorney mentioned was the three changes and, and then now he could present that again and they could look at it and see, but still the three facts remain, has it been a change, is it a need, and stuff of that nature and.
If, if, if that judge that turned us down on that other one looked at this, she would shake her head and say, no, you don't have enough of a record. But I mean, John knows how to make a record.
That's right.
Well, but with all respect, I would, i- i- if, you know, whatever you do, if, if you need to go back to the planning commissions, send us back without prejudice, if, if you will, and let us build our record from that point to come, come back here because Gary and his wife, they want to put money into the city, into the business and make it look good. And because I can tell you, you know, you'll sell more cars if you look good. I think.
I want a highway to look good.
Yeah, e- exactly.
I'm sorry.
No, sir.
One of the things we're seeing in the planning commission and going back to this forward is the wording. So when they receive something from an inspector or from Billy or from myself, then they come back with an appeal to that. So the, the planning commission is held to, does this meet the ordinance? Is this what it says? That's what you're appealing. So the wording coming back with this maybe should be by special exceptions, which would fall into the four to five things that fall under special exception, which would be advertised and all that. When you start doing legally appealing something, the planning commission is gonna stand behind their inspectors. That's what's happened in the past, so there's confusion when it comes from planning commission to here. That's what we've seen between, you know, well, how could the planning commission didn't take care of that? Well, they were appealed. Well, we can't go against Billy's appeal, we can't go against Greg, you know, appeal. They, they're right, that's what the ordinance says.
You could, you could deny this without prejudice, as counsel suggests, and I think that would give an opportunity to either make a record that's sustainable or not.
And then punch us back to the planning commission if you would.
Well, I mean, that, you go back, that would be.
Okay.
That be okay?
Yes, ma'am. That's my fault because I didn't know the procedures. I, I've had businesses in other cities in Mississippi, but they didn't have a planning commission, like he just went in front of the board.
Yeah, we're trying real hard.
But.
You are, you are.
And so I just, it was my fault, I didn't know, I would have had this done for the planning commission, I didn't know.
And if it's in order, I'll make a motion that we uh release this, is not prejudiced for him to go back to uh, the planning commission, if, if you so think so.
That, that, that would be a legit order, um, and would be.
And let them make, let them come back to us with.
Is that a motion? Do we, I mean, do we have to have a vote on that?
Yes, it's on the agenda. A second. Yes, sir, it would make, it would be.
Motion, Danny? I'll make a motion. So second, Brian, all in favor? Opposed.
That motion was denied application going back to funding, correct?
Come back to you.
He get, but it includes, I mean, that's his prerogative, that's.
Right, but he's come.
Thank you, man.
Thank you all, and uh, are we free to go?
Yes, sir. Safe for resting, it's just a lot of fun.
Y'all didn't stand me last time. Was, you know, I'm planning on spending a lot of time with this, but i- if I hadn't noticed how bald I was until that last meeting, I should have. Yeah, I would have spent some money on some hair.
Brandon Cummins? Been here?
I hadn't seen him.
I haven't seen him.
Okay, Billy, we're back to you again.
All right, well, Miss Cummins not here, do we, they need to make a motion to not hear, just not hear it?
Um, that they're, but I get that, that's, that's a real issue for y'all. Uh, I mean, we just can't be changing the L D O all the time and we can't be granting variances all the time. This issue in here, Katie, it's got pictures and thoughts and it's. This is you get two curb cuts and if you are a corner lot, it makes it very difficult because the curb cut can can interfere with the turn and the stop sign.
Can't stay within, it can't be within fifty feet of the. Yes, sir.
Point where the, the curb. On the intersection, but there's also probably twenty houses in town that are like that already.
Yeah.
Prior to the ordinance.
Right, prior to the ordinance.
He's also, is he being ticketed or is he being flagged for parking on street?
What's, he wants to put a curb.
Now, I understand what he is, but he's, he's being.
He's claiming that he's being.
His vehicle's getting tagged because he's parking a vehicle at the stop sign and the people in the neighborhood calls every day about the car at the stop bar, just sitting there at the stop. And trailers, yeah, and trailers.
But sure, there's space maybe away from the stop sign.
Yes, ways from stop sign, inspector met him on site and gave him another idea how to do it and he said when he wanted to put the circle drive in front of his house to make it.
But the point is, he's not here, so.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Beth.
All right, uh, Saint Luke Methods Church is the first time the board actually here of a mural application. Kate's here and Dr. Tab here and Cook that's here as well. The uh, Puzzles Arch Committee met on September thirty and approved the application. We sent it up to the mayor and board for the uh final approval. I think they're gonna have the kids at Parks to help paint this, Lawson is gonna oversee the project and everything looks good for the Puzzles Arch Committee, so we send it up for approval.
Where?
Just because of some murals.
Saint Luke Methods Church.
On the south side, on the south.
Southwest.
It's in cases parks, so the kids will get to come over and help.
Be cool.
Oh, yeah, okay.
The picture should be in.
All the other mi, other murals are in your.
Yeah, those are in Dropbox.
In visitors now.
It's under uh.
The, the ones from earlier.
Uh, the ones from earlier are in. That, that one's under community development.
We need a motion. Thing also was approved. Arts, arts, right?
Not when I looked earlier either.
It's under Saint Luke. You have to scroll down. It's not a separate picture under.
It's, there's one document.
Did I get a motion? I still move, sir. Motion by Abraham. Second by Sanders, all those in favor. All opposed.
That's how I have my, that's how I have something for me.
Thank you, Billy.
All right.
Been seeing you a long time.
Thank you.
Anna?
Hey, thank you.
Always looking up there.
How are y'all? Hey, um, y'all have my um report unless you need something from me, I'm good.
Anybody have any questions, Devana?
I'm trying to.
Great job.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Chief?
I have a few things for y'all. Y'all have my own thing if y'all have any questions.
Steve, let me just run this by you real quick. I don't know if there's anything you can do about this, but uh, the handicap parking at some of these uh supermarkets.
Yeah, they are, uh, a lot of the supermarkets do not mark theirs correctly, which allows us not to gain right to. It has to have a sign and be painted with most before we can issue a citation.
Same thing downtown.
So if it has just a sign, gain, gain right of citation. It's just painted, right of citation, it has to have.
So, so what we may want to do is get a little management up there and let them know how to proceed with it. Okay.
Chief, uh, there, uh, on Court Street where we had that shooting, uh, two, two uh houses where I live, um, I really appreciate the update because those uh, the guys that, you know, did the shooting, oh, they don't actually live there, but I noticed the police is more visible in that area. the guys that, you know, did the shooting, all they don't actually live there, but I noticed that police is more available in that area there. I just appreciate everything you're doing to.
Yes, sir.
Another one more, one last thing since he, I didn't mean in a rubber scamper, but how many times do we, these are offensive, we declare it as a public nuisance.
Yeah.
I took over.
I'm sorry, I couldn't respond.
That's the important way to go saying though, but he said he, he, it's on the agenda for him to talk to him because this is not the first time. This is an ongoing thing. Somewhere down the line, we, we gotta deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you too.
Uh, I'm, need the approval of the, for the lowest and best, uh, quote for the officer's needed weapon than officer.
I move.
Y'all literally in favor.
That's right.
I need the approval lowest and best quote for license plate readers.
I move.
Okay.
Second.
Well, you got a.
All those in favor? All right, opposed. Hold up. Yeah, you had to.
So we meet and you got, I mean. Quiet, rest of the time.
Y'all have.
Be quiet.
Oh, a couple of things. Fire convention week, we've, uh, finished two schools today, so we're three hundred kids down and, uh, twelve hundred and fifty to go.
Wow, wow.
About a week. So we're very excited about that. It's going very well. Uh, just so you do, uh, have some clarification, we did have a major house fire this past month. We had a fatality. Um, I know there's, with any social media, everybody has got to figure it out exactly what happened and what didn't happen and all that. Just for clarification, we've got, uh, two insurance companies involved. One was with the car in the garage, the others with the house. I won't go into a lot of details. But we are tied up now with, uh, both parties needing to meet together before we dig it out to come up with an exact point of origin. So, uh, we are working on that. I'm working with the insurance companies with that, and we have not made a final call on that. And due to the extent of the damage, we may not have the ability to make a final call. But I just, I don't say that to give you too much information, but to let you know that the things that may be circulating may not be a hundred percent true. So, uh, in respect to the families that are involved, um, we want to make sure that we just, we have clarity with you and with the investigation, so knowing that we are working diligently with them, providing everything that's needed and assistance with the insurance companies as well. But, um, that's, that's where we are with that.
I'm, I'm sorry that our friends from Delta State aren't here to hear this, but anytime a firefighter has to deal with a fatality, particularly with somebody that they probably know, it's incredibly difficult. So them being able to go home and spend time with their family is important.
And I, Greg, I just want you to know, and tell all the guys, we appreciate everything that they've done. Very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank all of y'all.
Uh, Jamie? That's all you had.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Jamie?
Um, I don't have anything. Y'all have my report if you have any questions for me.
I love your work on the, uh, Facebook internet. It really, it really helps get them out there. Uh.
Well, uh, I have, one of my employees, uh, Sumner has been really on the ball with that, and I've got a great crew. So I, I can't take all the credit for it. They're doing a great job out there helping me.
You're doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thomas? Oh, I didn't see you over. He's high.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I'm here tonight to ask for approval to move forward with the fire hydrant maintenance plan, uh, getting the contract signed with Mr. Greg Roberts. Um, y'all remember we talked about, uh, the cost of us doing it in-house. We hired two guys, had the lowest pay that we, uh, pay them. Plus I have to have somebody oversee them and whatnot and still do the paperwork and everything. It's still, um, around eight thousand dollars cheaper to have Mr. Greg do it. He will do it in stages, so it's not, it's thirty something, thirty thousand dollars upfront. It'll be, uh, throughout the course of the year.
This is a bunch.
This was approved. It.
No problem.
No, I'm just.
Oh, I thought you had a question.
No, no.
Oh, we got you correct. Not ready approvals.
This was a. You have to appropriation. Yes, sir.
Motion by Mr. Abraham, second.
Second.
Well, all those in favor? Opposed.
That's all I have. Mary, do I have any questions for me?
Command, you're the crew. You guys are doing a great job. I saw you all on Christmas night. You was ideal.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
They've had a busy couple of weeks, so here with some water mains.
We got through with two water mains around midnight the other night. Thank y'all.
I have a question. What was the length of this contract? I'm trying to remember.
Uh, it's a four-year.
Four-year. Thank you. There you go. See y'all.
Afternoon, everybody.
Hey.
I don't have anything outside my report unless y'all have anything for me.
You're looking good.
Man, glad to see you.
Good to see you, man.
Thank y'all.
But you, I know you, you, you enjoying the break from me bugging you all the time, I'm sure.
No, no, it's all right.
Yeah.
All right, you take care. Appreciate it, Steve, though.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank y'all.
All right, Clint, the man who owns the building. We'll start really.
Got a.
One of these days I'll.
Got a couple of things for y'all tonight. Uh, first up is approval on our, uh, of the, uh, change order number three on our taxiway and apron construction project. Uh, this includes the removal of a fire hydrant and additional aircraft tie downs, and there's plenty of money within the project to complete.
So we're just gonna move the fire hydrant?
Well, so this is actually in, um, I guess a technical fire hydrant. It's more of, uh, it looks like a fire hydrant, but it's a two-inch stand pipe.
Both. Motion by Mr. Sanders. Second. Second, Matt. What's your name? Hey, yeah, yeah. All those in favor? All opposing. Okay, put it.
Uh, second is authorization to submit the pre-application for our, um, next year's FAA airport layout plan update project.
So.
Motion by Robert, second by Abraham, all in favor? Opposed.
And, uh, finally is, uh, approval of change order two on our emergency vehicle access road. This includes installing a light pole at the, uh, gate to provide illumination of the keypad in the gate area. Uh, we'll note that, um, uh, with this change order, we will be three thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars over budget.
Don't move.
So how do you, wait, what's the? So. Being over budget, how do you, um, plan to?
I guess we'll request it as a budget amendment. We can add it as a budget amendment, it's already change order.
Yeah, budget amendment. Yes, ma'am.
All right, Morgan, but, uh, Ted?
I second it, Mayor.
Oh, you did second my.
I will.
All those in favor?
Give y'all a chance.
Both.
Thank y'all.
You're not gonna make a big part of that. Kristen?
How's everybody doing? So outside my report, um, we will have a group of young athletes going to the Grizzly game this Wednesday to play at halftime. Um, and then our gym floor has been stripped up and we're waiting to put the new floor down as well as the door has been ordered, waiting on it to come in before we're able to put that insulated door on that rock, the side of it. Other than that, besides more report, y'all have anything for me?
Uh, yes. Yeah, let me ask you this question, Kristen. Uh, we're gonna have a lot of activity this weekend, uh, with East Side, warm East Side, uh, Homecoming Committee coming to town, and East Side Park is gonna be a known full. So is there any plans to enhance the lighting over there and put some light? Because it's dark and officers, when they have to respond to those calls, I want them to be able to see.
We'll go out, I'll go out there at nighttime and see what lights are out and see, uh, about getting some lights put out there.
I thought so. So is East Side, is that event gonna be at, at East Side?
I'm sure they'll use that East Side party always come out there. I mean, just be an idea, period, you know?
Okay.
It was still closed at the regular time, I assume. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Lady Arbo.
I have a couple of things. Um, as part of our, um, the beginning of the fiscal year, we normally request exemption for, um, certain vendors from our purchase order process. These are recurring regular expenses or regular, um, monthly expenditures that we exempt, um, as a recommendation from, I believe, our fiscal year 2020 audit. So that list is in Dropbox.
So you do this annually?
I do it annually at the beginning of the fiscal year. Yes, sir.
In motion.
I do.
I'm motion.
So is this whole, open POs for?
This is, what this does is it exempts these vendors from our, they still have purchase orders, but it exempts, it exempts them from the process as far as having to meet the date requirement or the, the process that we have as far as our audit guidelines, so that when they pull, if they pull these vendors, um, the, a packet front in our audit process, they don't have to meet the same guidelines, um, that our purchase process, um, as far as state purchase law and our city, um, purchase process requires. Because either from, um, the mail, uh, or because of the constant monthly recurrence of these, um, vendors, um, it, it's their recurring services. So they don't require us to have, this exempts them from that process.
That's when I asked if that was similar to an open PO, we ex, I get.
Well, we don't, we.
We don't call it that.
Yeah, we prefer not to do open POs because it, yes, ma'am.
Very similar. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Did Papa John's request or did you ever, did y'all ever think about using Papa John's on this list? The way they furnish our food and we don't. We've talked about that. We get, we get our pizzas for, for our concession stands at the park, man.
No, sir, because that is not a set amount. It's not a.
I'm staying.
Recurring. These are specific amounts.
Specific recurring, okay.
Amounts recurring.
I just knew we had a problem at one time trying to get an invoice from them.
Right.
Okay. All right.
That, that would not apply under these circumstances. Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve their equipment.
Second. Thank you.
Motion by Brian, second by.
The last thing that I have is, um, a, a fiscal year 2025 budget amendments that need to be made. And we'll still have our big budget amendment, but we can't do that until after we do our reallocation, um, of the expend, expenditures, you know, we have to go through the month of October, reclass certain expenditures back to the fiscal year. So if that'll be done in November, the first meeting in November.
I have a question. Does that include with the airport? Does this?
No, ma'am. I was, I did not have that when this was done. So that'll be picked, that one will be picked up in our big, uh, budget amendment, definitely.
I'll make a motion. Second by Abraham, second. Second, Robert. All in favor? Uh, opposed.
Thank you.
I know you're right there.
I only have one item needing approval on the employee action recommendation.
So moved. Motion by Brian, second by.
What's up? The second session.
Mr. Sanders?
It's me. I don't have anything. I just wanna say, you know, we've got a full week, I think. Is October fest this week as well? Yeah, and, uh, with all the activities and chief and I talking, we just wanna get to a save weekend.
Kirk Val's not here.
I pulled this, I pulled this from a prior, um, year. I'm not exactly sure who, but 404 Glasgow place, there's a storm drain behind at Scott Washington's house, and the ground is like caving in around the storm drain, and it's, his fence is on the line. It's in his fence. It's in between his yard and John Paul Alford's. If somebody can go look at. Do you know, did you get that? Steve, I was. I'm not sure who all need to be involved in that. Okay, storm drain, see. We've got it, Dan.
Mr. Tab? No, give me the, I bet Skip always eat long.
Got it.
Oh, nothing. Uh, I'm just blessed to be alive. I am a breast cancer survivor of.
Amen.
Fifteen years, so.
Congratulations.
Just thanking God for allowing me to be here.
Great, awesome, wonderful. Go ahead, follow, go here. Ted?
No, okay. Um, I'm just hoping, you know, this weekend with all the excitement and everything coming in is definitely something to remind you of a big holiday and we have a safe weekend.
Thank you. Brian?
Uh, but didn't mean to leave the police department earlier, out, out earlier when I got on my little suck box with, you guys had a busy month too. Appreciate everything that you do. Yeah. Oh. Josh, I think I gave you a list on some spots in the street. There's the one on Farmer has gotten progressively worse, and now the asphalt is actually kind of separated. So there's a. Or two. A clear, so to speak, a storm. Better than that.
That's me. Man. Oh. Yeah, now.
I'm not gonna let this down.
So we didn't have anything for competition.
We did not.
No, not.
No, we don't. Uh, I just want to emphasize to everyone, the, they, oh, y'all. Let's try to have a very safe weekend. We do have a whole lot going on. If Greg, when you put down with, um, upstate, you may listen to the system, well, I'll be glad to. And uh, I don't know if that's what I, my, our fingers game to see what we do. That's the only thing I do have. Uh, I do want to talk to you too, once we adjourn. And, uh, Doug, besides that, I'll enter that a motion. A motion. One second.
Hey, some of the bestest socks has these murals in them now.